As customary, we always have prayer before our meetings and I've asked Commissioner Brown if he would lead us in this prayer at this time.
Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we just thank you for this beautiful day, Lord. Thank you that we live in this great county, Hart County, Lord, and the-
He should be here in about five minutes. With that amendment to the agenda, do we have a motion to approve?
I make a motion, we approve the agenda.
Okay, I've got a motion by Commissioner Brown, second by Commissioner Bennett. All in favor? It's for a vote. Minutes for the March 14th meeting. Is there any additions or corrections that need to be made there? If not, can we get a motion to approve as written?
I make a motion, approve in minutes, March 14th.
We got a motion by Commissioner Bennett, have a second.
Second.
All right, any discussion? Not we call for a vote on voting. It's for a vote. Enter Chief Appraiser, he's going to give us our quarterly update.
Good evening, guys. Question, did all you guys have a report dated March 28th, 2023? It's in your box. If not, if you didn't go to your box, I've got a copy I can hand you.
I think everybody's got one.
Yeah. Thank you, Terrell's getting Frankie's.
You can read that. Everybody got that report?
Yes, sir.
As everybody knows-
These are completed projects.
These are, these are things that were completed and put on the tax records. Yes, sir. Now, some of them may be partial completions as of the first of the year. With that, that could be a house, let's say it's at 50% complete as of January 1, and we'll put it on the books at 50% complete. And then we, by law, we have to give them an additional 25% off of that for economics. So, that's, this 403 reflects how many they have actually ridden and processed at this point, as far as permits. You'll see the next thing on your report. I believe the prior chief appraiser had said that they would, right now, and if anybody at home or hearing the crowd, right now is the time to file for your homestead, for conservation, any type of return. Currently, we've had 280 people so far apply for homestead. And we're, we process those, process those as we go, take them for the vote before the board assesses as for approval. Thirty-eight real property returns has come in. That's where somebody has either declared a value or mentioned, hey, I've removed the building, or I've added something. Now's the time to do that. If you've torn anything down, let us know. But you have to April 1st. We're going to extend that to the following Monday, what we're going to need to do, what kind of adjustments will need to be made for this upcoming digest. The next thing that we're looking at is going to be marine and business returns. This is pretty, pretty big. It also includes free port returns as well during this time. So far, personal property has processed 1,776 business and marine returns. If you got a piece of paper in the mail that has boat information or anything like that on it, that's basically saying, hey, check this information out, make sure that it matches, that it matches what, and then following that, our assessment notices should go out. They need to be thrown out in May. That way that we can, we have all year to work a digest properly, do projects properly as we, as we go through out to here. And with that, that's all I have, is there anything, any questions you guys might have?
It sounds as though you restructure an office over there somewhat along with the work that you've got going on.
We're going to have to, yes, sir. Yes, sir, we will. We've got, we've got people doing things they haven't, haven't done before right now. Everybody's kind of, kind of having to pitch in and learn stuff new and, and to get this thing out.
As long as they're willing to do that, that's great.
Yes, sir. I haven't had anybody tell me, no yet.
Okay, that's good. Any other questions?
Now's the time to do a return, and you tell them what you think your value is. And you got to, you mentioned that too. I just want to reemphasize this so people understand. This is another opportunity to dispute their value if they think it's not.
Well, you're not disputing it at that point.
But they're telling you what they think it is.
They're returning the value. Now, that doesn't necessarily mean we would go with your value.
That's right.
We have to look at, at the market and what the market's doing. And understand, our offices, my office don't deal with taxes. We deal with value. So we're going to be looking at what things, what comparable things have sold for to value your property, not dealing with how much a person's taxed. But if there's anything that you see, and your information's online at Key Public, or you can come in the, in the office and get a property record card, we'll be more than happy to go over that thing with you. If you see anything that is incorrect, let us know.
For 16 years here in Hart County, and we just send our thoughts and prayers to that family. Went to Little League Opening Day, and I would just like to commend Jim and his staff for the good appearance that the baseball fields were in. They all looked good, and they have done a lot of work down there to make them look that way, so I just wanted to say thank you to those guys. Also, Commissioners, on May the 8th, the IBA wants to meet with the County Commissioner Board at 5:30 here.
Amen. For the processing, processing, other than that, that would be the only, only condition it'd be to it.
All the other offices-
They got it.
Yeah, but they do it 4%.
Right. Like I say, you can pay your taxes with it, but at a 4% surcharge on.
I was just wondering, had somebody asked me about it. And also, I appreciate Jim and him, the job he did. And at the Gun Branch, they had a thing with the Rotary Club dinner this weekend, and right there, it looked, looked good through there, and I appreciate the job that him and his guys are doing. That's all I got, Chairman.
All right, District 4, Commissioner Brown.
Talking about Jim and the rec department, there's not many rec departments that you can go to on a baseball day and the outfield has the lines in it, like they do at the MLB. Promise you won't make you late, but they got families to get home to, and they got food to put on the table and food to put on our tables, so be wary of those agriculture vehicles out there and just know that they have the right of way. And, and they have the right of way no matter what time of day or what time of season, so always yield to your agriculture equipment. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. District 5, Commissioner Dorsey.
I want to just bring up one thing, we're going to talk about it a little bit here. We want to talk about the fire department. But we are getting very thin in our ranks in the fire department. We've got a lot of people who are starting to draw the pension that they've been in for 20 years or so, and we just don't have the people backfilling. I mean, Chief, tell me if I'm wrong.
You're right.
You know, those of us who've been in it for 25, 30 years-
All right, we'll move on to Wheels Coordinator part-time for the senior center.
We was looking at this afternoon, and we seen one bullet point we need to delete out. It's the third bullet point, has a managerial responsibility. If you look at the job description, the third one, where it says completes all initial assessments, no, we're just going to houses and visiting with, with, with people, we need to delete that out. That's, that's, that's the manager's job. Other than that, that's it.
All right, can we get a motion to approve this job description, part-time senior center? Somebody, second. Got a motion by Commissioner Dorsey, second by Commissioner Teasley. Any discussion? Anybody have any questions or concerns? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor? It's 5 of them.
Going back to the Census Bureau, anything on the utilities, electrical, plumbing, stuff like that, it's considered multifamily housing. If they, if they're built separate, you got septic, separate septic system, separate all utilities, then they're considered single-family housing. Long Island County was, was, or Georgia County, I looked there, and it says basically the same thing. They're, they're qualifying them, they can go from there. But a lot of it was, they can go from there. But a lot of it was, because duplexes wasn't specifically listed in the minutes anywhere if multifamily was. And that was the discussion amongst the board that night was about multifamily. So that's what we had right now.
But in other organizations such as the state and federal government, they do recognize as single-family dwellings, I mean, we're going to hear that as-
You're going to hear that, and again, it, HUD, for instance, goes up to, I think it's four or five. It's listed, I can't remember where it's four or five, listed five or less, or four less, whichever one it is, I don't remember, as single-family housing. So again, but it's, it's up to this board to pick the definition or to create the definition y'all want to create. I mean, that's, that's entirely y'all prerogative to do it any way you want to do it. But that's-
Tonight, who have even come and talked to folks in this office and who have been denied. There's more than one out here, and to go and do it because we got one request is not in the best interest of the county. It's not what we were elected to do. This particular person, this particular person has not even spoken to me about it. I'm one of the five decision makers. And yeah, it is what it is, and I don't know why it is. But when you go and look at the picture, we have nothing in our subdivision ordinance right now about duplexes that really has any teeth to it at all. And if that's the direction that we're going to go, we need to finish that before we start making changes to moratoriums, because if you go and lift this tonight, and you allow-
Based on the experience of folks coming to my office asking about-
Wouldn't this be something that you'd look at whenever you, you know, like, I know we've been-
Well, we got to come up with a definition first.
Well, I think it's, I think it's multifamily.
I, I think, I think there should be stipulations on duplexes. The subdivision ordinance, as far as I'm concerned, totally different duplex, because it's two different animals. But there should be stipulations in there to how many you can own, how big the lot size is, how big the building is, how long you got to keep that property. There's quite a few things that could be put in there to where maybe that you could build duplexes, but there's, like I said, there's a lot of questions there that I would like to have answers to, and I'm sure you gentlemen would as well, because it's like-
The future, so be it, but right now, I think that we should definitely stick with no mass grading when conducting these. Minimum of one acre lot size, I think that that's reasonable. You know, Jackson County currently has 1.5 acres in Jackson County, so that's kind of where I got that from, and a couple other of our surrounding counties have one acre lot size minimum on duplexes. Separate septic systems for each side. A lot of times these, these will share septic. One thing that I brought, brought to mind myself was having septic, or separate septic systems kind of alleviates the problem with the, the lot size, because you're going to have to have optional space for septic, space for the backup septic for each side. Would like to see county water hookup in any, in any point possible, if you're going to put something like this, that's very, that'd take care of a lot of issues there as far as how that plat's drawn out. Limiting how many can be built at one time or on one track was one thing I was looking at, especially where we're, where we're at, with us in this moratorium phase and us trying to manage growth. You know, having some type of stipulation where we could limit how many could be built at one time, or how many permits one individual could pull at one time. Erosion control is big for me. When we build chicken houses, we got to have an erosion plan, it's about anywhere $5,500 to $8,500. You got to have a silt fence, you got to have seed and straw. They're requiring this in other counties and municipalities closer, you know, as you go out towards Atlanta, so it's coming this way. We need to protect our environment, we need to have erosion control. And this is what I'm passionate about, is you could take a veteran or a first-time home buyer, and they can go get an FHA loan, or they can get a VA loan with very low down payment, a great interest rate. Everybody knows how high the interest rates are, and they can sometimes get 30 to 40 years financing. And they may not be able to afford that $250,000 house that's for sale right now on Zillow, but they could potentially, with this low down payment, go buy a duplex, rent out the other side. Now all of a sudden, either they're A, having half of their mortgage or majority of their mortgage covered, or B, they're doubling down on their equity. Now you're taking an individual who is just not looking for a handout, but looking for a hand up, and may, trying to better themselves, they're making an investment in this community, and now they're taking, you know, we're seeing historical interest heroes going through the roof. I mean, people are just, they're worried, they're worried, you know, how they're going to afford a house, how they're going to get ahead in life, and, you know, I think for us, sometimes maybe we just need to get out of the way and let the free market help dictate some of these things. And in this, I see where people can find a feasible place to rent. And it's definitely needed here. I digress, I took a little much, too much time. I work for my bullet points, I want to go with my bullet points.
There should be, there should be a very low number on how many that a person can own, a very low number, because, I mean, the, the problems as far as providing, this is closer to affordable housing than what we have now. And, and like I said, he asked me a question, I've got enough respect for this board to not answer him, but to bring it for the board, and that's why we're having this discussion. So, but the first thing we need to do is come up with a definition. We have three different variations right here, and we could come up with our own, but I'd say that let's look this over and come back to the next meeting, and let's either have a definition or use one of these if that's agreeable.
And I'll tell you why, because I've, I've been to the county three times, that's been going on for almost a year, not quite a year, so I'm not going to say a year, but I've been to the, the county administration three times this year, and almost since last summer, to pull a permit to build a duplex on a lot that I own, right? And I've been told three times that I can't because it's under, this moratorium. All right. The moratorium that was put into place on July the 27th of 2021, I may, if I get long here, just let me know, but I'm going to try to throw this out there, was under Chapter 46 for land development standards, and Chapter 50, actually, mobile home and trailer ordinances, okay? Which, which, which set the guidelines, county of the Board of Commission-
County Road, it's three acres minimum lot size-
That's exactly right, you're exactly-
With 300-foot spaces between the driveways.
That's right.
The reason we've done this, Charlie, is there's been so much of public outcry about these developments, and it started with the Mount Hebron, and we all know about that mess up there.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
And then we've had other issues. This room has been literally packed, standing room only, with people wanting us to do something about this growth, and while we've done it, that's one of the reasons why we had to put a building inspector in place.
No, that's right.
Because of all the growth and issues, we had to do something to manage it, and that's what we're trying to do.
I think that was a long time coming, Joey, and I'm telling you, I think it, excuse me, Mr.-
I'm Joey.
Mr. Dorsey. It's a, it's been a long time coming. I've been a proponent for, by Mr. Gordon, that clarified some verbiage. I think that's the second meeting that's been often referred to, right? In the, in the sort of, we're going to call it the second meeting, that clarified some of the verbiage. He, and he did. He addressed multifamily, he addressed tiny houses, he addressed container houses, he, several things were addressed inside of the development standards that pertain to the development of land for such properties, right? No question about that, and that's exactly right. Properties, right? No question about that, and that's exactly right. All right, and then, on, on or about the end of that year, it was extended, I mean, I think 12, 14, it was extended for another 180 days. All right, and then, on March the 15th, almost a year ago, March 15th of 2022, Chairman Sayre opened the discussion and clarified some misinformation, this is verbatim, just off the minutes. Chairman Sayre, it's already developed and built on it.
Go and look at our comprehensive plan. It will tell you that this multifamily-type housing needs to be done around the range of the city of Hartwell.
Which, which would be-
And, and when Jeffrey Dorman spoke from the UGA out at the Ag Center, he basically said the exact same thing, did he not?
I appreciate Mr. Dorman's assessment of where I should and shouldn't build something. If we had zoning in the county, you know, if, if we were currently under zoning ordinances, he's exactly right. I may or may not be zoned to build what I want to build on my lot, but, but fortunately for the citizens of Hart County, we don't have that. There is no, there is no zoning, there is no, there's no, nobody that said, if I want to build a chicken, if, you know, if I, if I have enough property, I can build a chicken house, if I have, I can build a stack house, I could put a used mobile home under chapter, under Chapter 18 of the current law, which is not-
Because you could pull the building permit under 18, that you don't have to comply with anything under the land development standards, which you still do.
That's right.
You still have to meet the setback, you have to meet, and so-
Good question.
Since they're part of the moratorium-
Good question, Mr. Gomano.
So you can't, you can't exclude one from the other, and you're saying 18 is totally separate from 46, and it's not incredibly homingled. To get a building permit, you got to comply, you've got to comply with everything under 46.
Yeah, so, so I have, I comply, my lots are, are recorded, signed off on by Terrell in 2022, August 2022. I meet the 40-foot setbacks, I meet the 10-foot side setbacks, I meet all health, health department requirements, I've already had the soil test, I've actually paid for the permits twice because this has been going on for so long now that they expired and I had to do it again.
And you've already got septic tank permits?
Yeah, twice, because this is, well, I pulled them, I bought, we met, we've had the, we've had the soil test done, we've had site plans done on all lots, four-bedroom septic system meets all state requirements.
Four-bedroom?
Yeah, for my, for a duplex, I got two, two-bedroom duplex.
Single-family or multifamily?
I'm sorry?
Was it single-family or multifamily on your application?
I mean, this, I did it, I did it a year and a half ago.
It's single-family, if you want to look at it, you got all four of them right here.
That's correct, and she, and they have been approved, the drawing, the site plans, that, so you know some, a lot more about it than, than you, than we thought originally, but I-
Yeah, because you didn't even talk to me about it.
But I've, I've already, I want to build there.
I mean-
What, it's under moratorium?
I said, and I said earlier, Charlie, that we need to finish the subdivision ordinance, and then we can look at some of this stuff.
So since-
There's been a lot of things that's gone on with this board that we've had, that we've had to deal with, that has pulled us away from being able to do this. This thing with this enclave thing took a ton of our time, a ton of our time. Then we had service delivery strategy we had to work out. There's been a lot of things.
Short-term rentals.
Short-term rentals and all this.
Oh, yeah.
But I'm, I'm sorry, but in my opinion-
But, but irregardless, I mean, there's two duplexes here, right, on this old Big Light Road. The, the law that allowed this guy to do this on this lot hasn't changed, hasn't been put under moratorium, it hasn't been questioned since this guy did that, is my point. So what afforded this guy that opportunity affords me the same opportunity. So I disagree with that, and I'll tell you why. People have talked to all of us, growth has been the hot button of the last year and a half. And guys, tell me if I'm wrong, every one of us, this is what we've had to face. Packed this room full, people can't even get in the doors, they don't want more growth. We are a republic, former government, we are representatives of the people who elect us, we listen to our people who elect us. I'm sorry that we don't have the commission to do something about this, are also the same people in this county, I'm one of them, that said in the late 90s that we don't want zoning because we don't want the, the government, we don't want this board telling us what we can and what we can't do with our property. That's the same people that said that. And so, so I know you're, I know you're quoting 2022 comprehensive plan, and I know that's-
The one we just adopted.
That's right.
That's right. And I know.
The one we just adopted a couple of weeks ago.
And, and I know that, that, that some, some people don't want it. You know, I don't own other property that I own. I don't want it developed up into half-acre lots. I get that. I understand. I understand that. But it's still, these are my lots. These lots were developed under Chapter 47.
Single-family.
That's the standards for pulling a septic permit. When I turned in the site plans and qualifications.
If it was multifamily, I think it would have had multifamily, because it lists single-family or multifamily type of structure. I don't know. I didn't talk to the guy who did this. That was John. So.
Those, those met the criteria in order to be permitted.
I'm going to make a motion that we leave things as they are, and we continue to work on our subdivision ordinance. And once we get that wrapped up, then we can take a look at this. I think that's the fairest way to handle it.
... on my lot, simply under Chapter 18, building supply, excuse me, building permits. And, and, and anybody's opinion of, of building something on that lot, like, it, it, it's foreign, it's a foreign thought. Like, you know, they might not like the color of paint, they might not like the shingles, but, you know, that's my lot. And I, like, I'm not, I'm not breaking any laws by simply trying to pull a permit to build this on that.
I think you got a commitment in the motion that we will take a look at this.
I do.
After we finish the subdivision. So let it, let it take its process.
I mean, is it going to be another two years?
I can't answer that, Charlie.
That's what I.
I've sat here and made a motion that we finish that, and then we take a look at it.
Well, we also made motions a year and a half ago to keep extending this thing. Like, I don't, a law change.
Yeah. My, my question would be, okay, yeah, let's, let's definitely discuss it. I get that. But, and kind of what he just, when there's not prior planning in place, and what can happen when you don't have the correct laws in place. So what do we need to do? We need to get on our horses, get these laws in place, put some teeth in them, get something together we can hang our hat on. And, because what hurts me right now is, we did that because we had outside influence that were pretty much coming in here, had no care for, no care for this county. And all they were worried about was their dollar. I mean, you look at Charlie and some of these other builders, I mean, they're from here, they grew up here. And I hate to see laws that were put in place because guys that don't give a rip about this county now affecting folks that want to invest.
This explosion of growth. I mean, I don't think there's a member on this board that would allow that. But by the same, I think the conversation was good. So I'll commit to working any night of the week on this. I mean, if we, if we want to come up from, to an earlier date on the subdivision ordinance and, and working on it all together, I'm for that. Or if we want to.
Let's just keep doing it like we've been doing on Tuesday nights. Not doubt. What we did before.
Yeah.
After, after the meeting, get them knocked out.
So when that work session, it's on the 11th, correct?
Yes.
So I guess, what do you guys, I mean, I appreciate a civil discussion and a civil debate right there. I mean, if we could have that every time, I mean, that's what.
There's nothing wrong with that.
That's, that's what the whole system's made up of, is, you know, thoughtful disagreement.
All right. All in favor? Okay, for vote. That's five of eight. All right, we'll move on to Butts' flat variance request. New Business 13A.
Right. What this is, this person has, has came to me and back in, what they've done. They bought three lots in a very older subdivision.
Let me clarify something. The one acre is already a law. Y'all have already voted and approved it.
That's right.
Okay. The half-acre lots were the problem, going to be.
Yeah, there's water. There is public water there.
Doesn't matter.
And it is over a half acre.
Can't do anything with it.
Can't do anything with it.
One acre minimum is for, to build a home on.
But when I bought it, my deed says that I bought lot nine, 10, and 11, part of 11. And I can't do anything with lot nine?
But you're.
It's combined.
In 1995, and it's just all but one parcel.
Okay.
For tax purposes?
No, it wasn't for tax purposes. That was illegal. That was.
Really?
Well, because she wanted all the lot. She didn't care about selling one lot or.
So that's not a big problem.
But that's our dilemma. And that, that one parcel, and then we fall back and just flip that parcel up.
I thought somewhere if it was a half acre and there was water.
It used to be.
It used to be.
It used to be.
Well, see, I mean, how is a person like me supposed to know that? I mean, you know, know that this kind of thing is happening? Because I bought this lot thinking that I had something of value there that I could set.
She got county water, she said.
But that ain't the well. The well was brought.
Is there a well there?
No, it would be on the next door.
But what I'm saying, you still got to be X number of feet from that well wherever it's at.
Even if it's on the other lot.
The wells, they're not using the well.
Don't matter.
Wouldn't it be in the middle, right there? Would they prove drain line is?
I'm looking.
I had a perk test done on.
It's on the plant here. The well and septic tank.
That's the problem. It's, if you look at where the septic tank and drain line is, if that's where they went with, which is what it's stating, that would put it really infringing on the half-acre lot if it was to be split off. And I don't, I don't think by health, health department standards, they're going to let, you know, I mean, they're not going to let you have a lot with.
With the position of the septic and the drain field.
Well, the drain fields are not where, they don't go in that way. Because we finished a room in the carport of it and added fill line to it, and it doesn't go that way now. It goes back behind that outfield and back there.
Still there, though.
And that well, that's way up there by the road would be 100 feet from the septic tank in the back of the house, I think. It's, it's 209 feet deep. And that well is right by the road.
I think your best bet's leave it as it is. Because if you, if you subdivide it, you're going to have a lot that's not going to be developable, because it's after we've changed. And the only, only value it's going to have is to the neighbors that are joints.
Well, I agree with you if I can't build on it. But that's why I was trying to get it fixed, so I could.
I would leave it as it is. If you want to build a home.
When I bought it, it was like I bought the house with this lot, and I bought the lot next door, too, is what I thought I bought. That's what my deed says.
You purchased this in 2021, correct?
Yeah. No, I bought, I bought this in.
No, I think this on the record somewhere.
I bought this in 2015.
2015. And that's when this, that's when, that's when this last flat was, another 95. That flat was that way when you bought it.
I was going on tax.
I don't know what they told you when they sold it to you, but you bought one parcel of land.
The lady that I bought it from, did that, because she didn't want anybody to put a house next to it. What she told me.
Once it's combined, you can't go back and uncombine. It's got to be constant when you uncombine, if that makes sense.
Well, then.
The flats still exist. We're separate lots.
That, that has been changed by this board. They cannot combine them. If they do it, they got to resurvey it.
When you going to do that?
A little while back.
You haven't defined like yet. That's in the.
That's in the, that's in the ordinance.
That will stay single.
We ain't got done with it yet, Charlie.
I only felt like this.
All right. Ma'am, I'm sorry, but that's, that's the way it is.
It wouldn't be so bad, but I've got a buyer, and I've already did a soil test and everything. And I had no idea that.
Make a motion to deny the Butts' flat variance request. Got a motion by the commission?
Second. And it's in the referendum, so it can't be moved around once it's voted on. I want to tell you something I've thought about. We got this debt service with the jail. Part of the jail needs to be part of this, I think. That's, that's above my pay grade in negotiations, so.
Does anybody know what kind of payment we're going to have there at this point?
Payments, jail payment? 1.2 million a year.
I know, I haven't heard.
I think that what it is, 1.2 million.
All right. But just take it where you started. We're going, we're going to start talking, going over this, because we would like to have this on the ballot in November to get it done, because our current splotch runs out in April of 2024. All right. 13C.
$3,000 a year is what our share of it is. We can install about three miles of six-inch pipe every year, two and a third miles of eight-inch pipe, and roughly a mile and a third of 12-inch pipe, or some combination thereof, using our existing splotch funds. I understand the board has very difficult decisions to make, if and when splotch is voted on and hopefully passed. So I know it's, if you take from one, you got to give it to another, vice versa. But I'm here just asking, as you consider how much you put on the referendum, that you do everything you can to get us more funds. We've had people here talking about county water tonight. Our hands are just, I won't say they're tied, but with the cost of everything, we certainly could use as much money as the board can spare. Some other things to be aware of. We've been very successful in the past getting community development block grants. But at this point in time, we think we've pretty much exhausted areas in the county where we can find the right combination of the right percentage of low to moderate income households, which is what CDBG grants are based on, that aren't too far away from our existing system. DCA, when they look at that, they're looking at two things. Basically, what it, what the percentage is of low to moderate income people, and then what it costs to serve each low to moderate income person. So we've kind of cherry picked the county. That's not a polite way to put it, maybe. But we've kind of exhausted, we think, all of the areas we can really get CDBG grants in. What is too far away? Depends. It depends on a lot of things, Michael. I mean, you know.
I got plenty of low-income people down in Newburgh, but your, your water's about a mile or so away.
I think it's more than a mile, probably. But it's a pretty good distance. Yeah. We, we looked at, we looked at the opportunities with the grant writers this past year.
Franklin County was using, you know, two and three-man crew to put in six-inch lines. And they put a lot of them in. If people see that there's activity going on, and I know we've been dependent upon splotch, or you guys have, and what money's been borrowed and what grants have been got. I just think we're to that point where there's a lot of six-inch lines that can be run, that can be done in-house, at a lot cheaper rate than $175,000 a mile.
Possibly, possibly. I don't mind looking at the analysis.
Before we go to taxpayers, we need to know the answer to that.
I don't have any problem looking at it and seeing what it would cost to buy the equipment and so forth. But.
The problem is, we're all dependent upon splotch.
I know.
That's the problem.
I know. And I know it's tough decisions for the board. It really is. But however we do it, with our own crews or with contract crews, competitive bidding, whatever, it's, it's going to take a bunch of money.
Have we ever put in our own lines at any point in time?
No. We don't have any.
I see it all over the, other counties, them having their own equipment in, you know, little backhoes and.
Like any excavators.
Two or three people all done in the line.
Well, it's expensive to buy that stuff. Most communities on major projects, they generally bid stuff out. I'm sort of familiar with Franklin County. They do some smaller projects with their own crews. And we can look at that. We don't, right now, we don't have any place to really put our equipment, nor, nor to put more people, unfortunately. So.
Possibly that could increase your maintenance employment also. More equipment to work on, more equipment to maintain.
Lease it. Look at leasing.
That's fine. We've looked at it. It's been a long time since we've looked at it. It didn't make sense years ago.
For vote, all in favor? That's five of a vote. All right, we'll move on to surplus ladder truck fire department.
Unless you got some information in your packet about it. What it is, DeKalb County's got two 75-foot ladder trucks. They're offering the ladders out for $7,500 apiece. Both of them have been pressure tested this year. And the ladder's been tested and certified this year. What I've asked Jerry and him to do is to come together with a cost analysis of what it's actually going to cost if we get these trucks. The other cost, equipping them, making some modifications to a couple of stations to house them in. So that will put the information containing in your packet. I would call them again this afternoon and went back with a question about the ISO, what possible benefit we get through the ISO, based on putting these two more ladder trucks in. And I'm going to turn it over to him and let him go with all the stuff with you.
And informing jobs you guys hired me to do as far as getting this ISO stuff in check, there's a part of it in regards to ladder trucks. This county's had substantial growth since 2012. And the buildings are getting bigger, the fire ratings are getting bigger. A certain part of this right here, number needed by ladder companies, it was in the packet. Individual ladder service response areas with at least five, five buildings of three stories, 32 feet in height, or more, from ground to eve, or five buildings that need 3,500 gallons per minute fire flow, or a combination of the two. At this time, I've continued going through the commercial buildings we have. I haven't hit the churches yet. Supplies, tools, ladders, radios, to stock these vehicles to meet the criteria that ISO's set for. And Georgia, you know, Standards and Training has a set ruling on how we do this. And the book that we follow is Georgia Fire Law's Regulation Act. It breaks down all this. Anything green is what's in this book. What's in blue is what ISO requires. So Standards and Training comes out and inspects our trucks. They generally do it on two-year span. This stuff's not in our trucks. We're non-compliant. We have 30 days to fix it. So I'd rather they stay compliant, stay ahead of it before they come, and it's done. There are two total prices on this, all the areas that we need to cover as far as larger buildings. One will be at Station 1 in downtown Hartwell. The other will be at Station 4, which is Shale Creek, which we cover the industrial park. Those are within two and a half road miles of those stations. Purina, the first driveway to Purina is literally two and a half miles, but that counts. It's an entrance into their facility. So we're covered on that. But a lot of the, the corporation wants to have it too.
Oh, yeah. Oh, my goodness.
Yeah, oh, my goodness. That's not, that's building's required 3,500 gallons a minute or more. Several of the industries, you know, that you would not think would actually take this. When you actually go to worst-case scenario, what if somebody could come into that building? There's a calculation chart that we use to figure fire flow. And a lot of these buildings are still sitting at 4,000, 5,000 gallons a minute. That's not comprehensible, even with the biggest water system in the world. But ISO, that's.
Three-inch splotch, because we've already committed a lot of splotch to something else.
Okay.
I have enough surplus in 203 that we can cover the cost of it, if that's what you desire to do.
Is that with these total 60,000 total figure gets correct? Well, there's two of them now. There's five each, and there's three.
That each, that's two.
That'll be covered. One of them's for a three-inch supply line, one of them's five-inch.
But that's, that's the complete package.
That's the complete package.
That's complete.
Yes, sir. 69479 is complete package, both trucks fully stocked.
Right. That's what I was looking at.
Yeah, bottom line, bottom line.
Yeah, 69479 would bring us both those trucks fully stocked.
Here, here's my question. We know why the trucks are so cheap.
They're being surplused out. I mean, they're being replaced.
And building modifications and all that.
Yes, sir.
If we have, if this truck does not give us the service, well, the building's already ready now.
Building's ready. You still got to equip it, so you.
I make a motion, we go purchase.
I just have one question, and it's, it's in the 203 account. You said we had enough to cover it. Where are we setting now? I mean, because we use that for.
42 million dollars.
Okay.
I second that motion.
Okay. I made a motion that we purchase the trucks and do these amendments, buying the tools, fixing the buildings, all of that. And Commissioner Brad saying it, any other discussion?
I'd like to find two more at 7,500.
I'll keep working on it.
Vote, all in favor?
What is it now? Probably shooting, it's probably going to be after summer. First of all.
That would be for new recruits.
Yes, sir.
Come on, come on. We'll take everybody we can get.
13A.
You got eight. My red hair.
Let's, let's move on. 13A setback variance, United Granulation Service.
You also got the drawings in there and the request for setback variance for road acres. It's listed as a difficult appraisal, but it's actually road acres.
Right.
We need to see what the property lines.